So you were getting her call?
I'll take that.
Oh, it didn't range her?
Okay, good evening if you'll all join me with the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush. Campbell. Clay. Gesse. Latandre. Levack. Motola.
Here.
Nevis Mathias. O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers. Absent. Ted Ford. Gwendis.
Here.
Your honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start out with the, um... Let's see, Citizens Forum, since we have no... Anyone here as a citizen would like to talk to the council about anything you want? No, any kind of, uh... Anything last night, basketball, something like that? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We'll put executive session at the end, as we normally do. I can have the deputy mayor's report? Okay, nothing. So we have the mayor's report, actually. Here we go. First of all, there is a deputy mayor's report. Diane, no food tonight? So, from now on, I'm gonna make a motion. Every meeting is a budget meeting, then, okay? So first of all, the town of Vernon first responders welcomed home the 2023 national men's basketball champion UConn Huskies this afternoon, as they returned to the campus. They had fire trucks out there in the overpass welcoming them home. UConn athletics, as you know, has put Connecticut on the map, and we're proud to be... Celebrate and be part of the UConn men's basketball nation. We are like basketball country, aren't we? Like the nation's scaffold for basketball, between the men and the women, anyway. Also, some dates to remember. April 6th is the annual Easter egg hunt up at Henry Park and McCoy Field. First group starts at 5:15 PM. Everyone is welcome. April 11th at 6:00 PM is the fifth anniversary of the Vernon Senior Center. Please contact administration if you want to attend and make reservations. April 22nd is at 2020... These are all 2023, by the way. At 11:00 AM is the Vernon-Rockville Little League opening day. That event is at Legion Field. Everyone's welcome. Rain date is the next day, Sunday, April 23rd, same place, same time. April 25th, 7:00 PM, the annual town meeting, Rockville High School. I know everyone wants to make this one, yes. Of course, Rockville High School Auditorium, 70 Loveland Hill Road. Everyone's... It says here, "Everyone is encouraged to attend." On the council, yes, you are encouraged to attend, ladies and gentlemen. May 14th, 9:00 AM is the annual Mother's Day Dash at Henry Park. Race registration is 8:15 AM, and the race begins at 9:00 AM. And on May 29th, 10:00 AM, is the annual Memorial Day Parade. The parade stages at Northeast School, steps off at 10:00 AM, travels to Grove Hills Cemetery for a brief ceremony, and concludes with a ceremony in Central Park down here at 11:00 AM. So those are the mayor's presentations. All right. Ms. Bush, please, consent.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as... As written.
I'm sorry, seconded by Mary Ann. Do we want to poll either one of the two consent agenda items? Anyone want to poll item number one or item number two? No? Okay, we're not polling. So, any vote? Here we go. Everybody in favor of consent agenda? Raise your hand, yes. Any no's? Any opposition? Any abstentions? Nope, the vote is unanimous, 12-0-0. All right. We don't have this. I want you to do number two, and we can get that other way, Laura, then we'll do the pool, just because it won't take that long.
All right. The town council hereby authorize Mayor Daniel A. Champagne, or his designee, to sign any and all documents relative to the grant application for the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood to support operations and project support for birth-to-five system projects on behalf of the Vernon Youth Services Bureau.
All right, Ms. Bush makes the motion. Ms. Gesse seconds it. All right, we'll have... Ms. Hill is here. Thank you very much for coming. It's always a pleasure to see your smiling face. Why don't you regale us on the parts of this that are important for us to know? Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. Thank you. Through the deputy mayor, this grant is a continuation grant of a grant that we began in July of 2021. The purpose of the funds are really to strengthen your local early childhood collaborative in Vernon. That's our Vernon School Readiness Council. We've labeled the project that we've been working under this grant Vernon Better Together, because it really focuses on increasing partnerships for early childhood, particularly with parents. So far, we've been able to do a number of things with these funds. We've been able to hire a part-time coordinator, identify two parent ambassadors, who gather information from parents and represent them on our council. We've conducted a parent survey. We use that information to help us plan the activities and events of the council. We've done collaborations with the library, offered some free preschool events for families, and we improved our website, and so we're looking to continue this effort.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hill. Any questions? Questions from Ms. Hill? Nothing? No one? Anybody? Once, going twice? All right. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? None? No abstentions? It's unanimous again, and I'm sorry, 11-0-0, yes. You get to learn how to count after a while, Ms. Stagel, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and showing up tonight. Do we have a... Did we have a motion for one, or no? Not till after? Okay. So, um, we're gonna have a little presentation here. Mr. Prokyle, please.
Good evening, everyone. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Pleased to get this part of the agenda started by giving a brief history and a recap of the timeline for the Horowitz Pool that Mr. Sittler had presented previously to the council in public form. And then it'll be my pleasure, through the deputy mayor, to introduce our presenters following this timeline. The pool, for those of you who are interested in the history, was constructed in 1952. Around 1990, circa 1990, there was a renovation project done to the pool. From 2003 to 2010, there was quite a bit of work done to the pool. There was a study that was commissioned, an engineering study, to look at the pool, the hydrostatic pressure. And then, over that course of time, the Parks and Recreation Department, Public Works, have done a significant amount, hundreds of hours of staff time, and thousands of dollars worth of repairs and maintenance to the pool and to the adjoining pool house. In 2019, the town had decided, the administration had decided to conduct an RFP to look at several options. And as part of our due diligence, we secured an engineering firm. Of note, same engineering firm was selected through a competitive bid process that was selected back in 2006, when the first study was done. And so they brought a lot of experience from then, from that time, for Vernon, and they also have a lot of municipal experience statewide. And so they had determined through their study that a renovation was not feasible, and the whole pool needed to be replaced. And that involved also the pool house next to it as well, because most of the... All the mechanicals are housed there. So they gave us a few options, and these were discussed previously. So just by way of recap to set the stage for our presenters tonight. The first option that we had asked as part of our due diligence was an indoor facility, and that was something that we had discussed with our school system, and it had some benefits. The cost of that was 10-plus million dollars, depending on different options that we were looking at. Another option was a seasonal facility, similar to the existing pool that was there, with the concrete gunite construction, and that was starting at around 6 million and only going up from there. So for cost reasons, we explored additional options, and there was some discussion and ideas generated from the community that we responded to. And as part of our due diligence, we looked at a splash pad. And that came back with a cost between 500 and 800,000 dollars, and had some benefits, but no lifeguards and so forth required. So we looked at that option as well. Then, the town also went out for another RFP, and a result of that RFP, we were brought forward another option that was much more cost-effective. That proposal is what you will be hearing tonight in detail. And we're pleased, at this point, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to introduce Brian Giuliano of Giulianos Pools, who submitted the proposal that we'd like to take action on with the council's approval tonight, to provide a new community pool, a new and improved community pool. Him and his team have been outstanding to work with through the contract bidding process and the negotiation process. Brian brings a lot of local experience and a family legacy, I think, to this project. And right from the get-go, from our first conversations with Chris and the rest of your team, you can tell there was a strong vested interest in doing what's best for the community, and he has a unique solution that he'd like to present in his proposal for the council to hear tonight. So with your permission, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian Giuliano to begin the presentation. Okay?
Please.
Brian, the floor is yours, sir.
Sit down. Did you just make sure the mic is on there? You see the green light?
Yes, I do.
There you go.
Great, you're good.
Thank you.
So, basically, everybody's got the handout and whatnot, and, um, yes, I was contacted, you know, I saw the bid invitation, and when I saw that, we were very interested to take a look at this project. One, you know, we have a very healthy commercial division, you know, as part of our business, which, over the last 22 years, has grown immensely. The commercial division is headed up by our vice president, Brian Cormier, which is seated just behind us here. Brian is also a local guy, as I am. And when we took a look at that project, you know, we were able to use a lot of our past experience to know what we thought it needed, bar none. We're in a region here where those concrete or gunite and shotcrete pools, they definitely had a time and place years ago. You know, like from the Miami Vice days, you know, you'd watch, and they have all this fancy stuff down south, but... And we couldn't do that with any type of membrane or liner pool back then, because there was no real computer technology. As time went on, we started to do more and more with the vinyl liner pool, and we started to become contacted more and more from municipalities, YMCA's, you know, and a lot of, like, condo complexes where there's, like, pools that get a lot of heavy use, because they all found themselves in the same boat as we are here with this pool over at Henry Park. The problem that we have where we live right here in New England is the cold. We're kind of on the absolute northern threshold for where these types of concrete pools even exist to begin with. If you were to drive just a... An hour and a half north of here on 91, there are no pools like that. And if they are, they're pools that are at very expensive resorts that are heated year-round. I have seen pools like this way up in Quebec, but they're at resorts where they're literally heated all through the winter, outdoor and indoor pool. And if they're heated, they're fine, but the cold weather breaks them down. And although the last two or three winters haven't been that cold, we just... The winter of 2014 and 2015 was extremely cold, and no matter how good the pool is built, no matter how well it's done, you're gonna have issues with that ice. Some... Brian and I have seen the ice in these pools as thick as 24 inches, and that ice moves and shifts and does all kinds of crazy things, and it wreaks havoc on those. So our structure not only handles the ice, but the membrane we use, which is a 60-mil membrane, is something that's totally impervious to any type of ice. So it's used all the way up into Quebec, and it can take four feet of ice. It doesn't matter how cold it gets, there's never an issue with it. We brought a sample with us of the actual pool structure, which has a lifetime warranty, and it, you know... It's just an absolute tank. Basically, it's a guardrail encased in a concrete footer that has been in existence since the 1950s, and it works absolutely fabulous. Just that one little piece is hard to carry, let alone how heavy-duty the eight-foot sections are. Yeah, the membrane, it's twice as thick as a normal, high-end, heavy-duty liner, and almost three times as thick as a liner we all grew up with, what we're familiar with. Any of the people back here like to see a sample? The beauty, you know, of the structure is, even if it was subject to a vandal, the membrane can actually be cut and welded, and that's something that didn't exist 15 years ago. So we can actually go in and take a piece and put a brand-new piece in and seam it in, just like if you got into an accident with your car and you had to go to the body shop. You bring it back from the body shop, and it's like, "What happened here?" And that exists in our industry now, which is absolutely amazing. You know, we have a little, you know, little handout here for you, just to kind of show you, you know, probably one of the most recent projects we did like this was at a very big campground up in the Berkshires. It was the same exact thing, where they had a pool that was built in the 1950s. It was actually built by a pool company here in Connecticut. It was a concrete pool, and they had been down the same road that you guys have been with the Henry Park Pool there, Horowitz Pool. And it was time for a change. And we have not had any issues on any of these pools that we've built, and the maintenance people love them because there's just... There's great maintenance, and the towns and the, you know, municipalities, the campgrounds, they love them because there's no money spent. Yes. Every 15 years, 10 to 15 years, you might want to do a liner membrane, if you want to brighten it up or whatnot, but there's no major renovations. You know, a membrane takes two to three days to put in, and the project's done, and you fill the pool back up with water. So, leaving that and going on to some of the other issues, I know that a lot of people have brought to the attention the hydrostatic pressure of the pool, worried about the drainage and whatnot. Again, that's something that wreaks heavy havoc on any type of concrete pool, because it's a concrete tub. It's solid, so it doesn't like pressure. This pool structure has a bottom that's made out of a substance called vermiculite, which is a mixture of insulation and concrete. It's designed to be porous. On the bag, which is extremely expensive, it actually says "pool base," and you can have hydrostatic pressure and water come right through it and go right down without any issue. I've been working with this product since 1991 firsthand, and it's just... It's a wonderful product in the industry. It works phenomenal. But the biggest thing, which is something that we kind of developed on our own by accident, well, not really by accident, about 20-plus years ago, was just basically understanding how this whole... This worked. As long as the water outside the pool is contained at a lower level than the water inside the pool, there will never be an issue. All these things can be backed up with super-simple household things, and the way I describe it is, if you take a spaghetti strainer and put a trash bag in it and fill it three-quarters of the way up with water, submerge it into your dishwater where you do your dishes, you put it into the water, and it's fine. As soon as the dishwasher, the dishwater is higher than the water in the strainer, the bag will float right up to the top, and that simulates the damage and whatnot that can happen to these pools. So what we do is, we do a perimeter drainer on all pools, and we do them whether they need it or not. We just make it a common practice, and we always have, and it's been a great way to grow our business. Not that long ago, we had an extremely rainy summer, and it seems like every four or five years, we get these summers where it just rains and rains and rains. I remember one June, it rained 21 out of 30 days. That was a long time ago, but... And we didn't have any problems. And it's because you have a water level in your pool near the top, and we have a drain down low, and that drain goes to daylight. Now, if we were dead flat, you know, if we were working right in the river valley, towns like, let's just say, Windsor, Connecticut, Windsor Locks, those towns can be challenging, where we have to install sump systems, and that... Because you have nowhere to daylight. But I'm sure most of all of us have been to this pool, and it's built kind of on a hillside. Yes, it's at the base of a hill, but there's a lot of downward grade as you make your way out to the main road. So we're gonna be able to tie, you know, get our drainage to go out to daylight, so everything will just naturally go. We don't need electricity, we don't need pumps, we don't need anything. We just need nice perforated pipe encased in crushed stone, surrounded by fabric paper, and when that water comes off that mountain from Fox Hill Tower, no problem. It'll go right into our drain and right out. It'll... That drain will never even reach 20% of its capacity. You could park, and I've done all this stuff, you could... And we actually own a fire truck. You could park it, you could take a fire truck and unload everything it's got on the high side of that pool. It wouldn't affect that pool one bit. You could do it in the winter, summer, it doesn't matter. When we are in positions where we have to do pools really quick, unlike this job, I believe there's... They have 13 months for the completion of this project. We have to make sure that the soil we put around the pool is compacted immediately, so it's ready to sustain the patio, all the disturbed earth. In that situation, we'll bring in water trucks and put sometimes as much as 18,000 gallons of water around the pool to make sure everything settles, and I love it. And the material around the pool will go down, and you'll watch a drain, and the drain will just release all that water, but it's had time to saturate all that earth around it and properly compact everything. You know, other subjects, you know, basically, I've never seen a more comprehensive line of questions than I have from the town of Vernon. I think Marty, he definitely exercised our sales manager, Chris, and myself, which was awesome. You know, they were great questions, beyond thorough, and beyond thorough. And we have everything, every i dotted and t crossed 10 times over here with this project. So, just, you know, a basic overview here, you know, and I think we have this handout, and it's awesome, we got it up there, but, you know, we're gonna remove in this thing, and the demo work is a major piece of the puzzle, but getting a piece of the fence down, you know, working with the town, making sure we're not disrupting any camps or activities that might be going on there, and that did come up, you know, in our talks. When it's good for the town, we'll get in there and start pulling all this material out of here. We are very fortunate to have all kinds of jackhammer equipment and everything we need to get this stuff out, and we... We're not gonna be subcontracting. So everybody that you're gonna be working with is us. It's gonna be a Giulianos Pools triaxle, Giulianos Pools workers. The project is gonna be overseen by myself personally. I still manage all the jobs, you know, within this local area. So, you know, insta... You know, removal of everything is key. Once everything is removed, we have to start the process of reconstruction, and that's when we're gonna take eight-foot sections of that, you know, frame that we passed around and start looking to install those. The biggest and most important part of this whole thing, when you remove a pool, is to make sure we get back into some sort of virgin ground or ground that is compacted to spec. A pool like this will weigh somewhere in the 1.4 million-pound range, okay? And that's not anything to mess with. It's like when you build a building. If you're building a building on a hill on the low side, that footing needs to be in compacted ground. I have a tremendous amount of experience with stuff like that, and I will personally be making sure that the footing for this pool is secure and ready to go. Plus, it's inspected by the town, so that's a big thing for me. Once the footing's all set, we can start building. You know, it kind of highlights all the different phases here, along with the cost at the bottom, with the timeline on the top right. We talked about the construction. The mechanicals for the pump and filter part of Phase 4, that's paramount. It's just beyond paramount. The structure, the membrane, that stuff, that's easy. The good news on the mechanicals is that all gets engineered. There's a certain turnover rate. They need to prove through the diameter of the pipes and the amount of elbows that this pool will turn over a certain amount of times and a certain amount of hours to maintain all the, you know, exceed all the health codes. There's a wonderful person in the state, Sean Marigan. He's in charge of signing off on all these plans, and that's somebody that I've worked with for a very long time. He started off in, like, the sanitarian-type world where I met him and went on to become... What's his position, Brian? Okay. Okay. So basically, they're gonna come in, and they're gonna make us show them, this is the state of Connecticut, an engineered plan for the plumbing. They're also gonna ask for the engineered plan of the structure, but the plumbing is the most comprehensive. Once they're happy with that, and all the permits and everything are set, you know, obviously, we're ready to do our plumbing, that all gets inspected. Then we move on to Phase 5. We put that vermiculite bottom, and again, guys, that's the key, because remember, it's porous yet hard. It's a wonderful subs... It allows not only water to come through it if it needs to, but moisture. It's just a... It's a wonderful product, and it'll be an awesome pool base for this pool, and it'll last forever. I mean, we pull liners out of pools that were built in the 50s, and aside from an hour or two of touch-up work sometimes, put new liner back in, and the pool's good for another 20 years. The installation of liner, we've done a lot of liners and a lot of membranes like this. I thought, and the town chose, to make the extra investment to not do a one-piece liner, which I think would have been okay, but the real bulletproof, you know, way of doing this is the membrane. We have a gentleman that does the membranes for us, and we actually weld them on-site, and that goes... Dips back to that whole welding technology I talked about. The liner is so thick, we can actually weld it like we're welding metal. And it is just... It's unbelievable. All, you know, the steps, the corners, everything is an absolute perfect fit, a much better fit than what I would call a package liner, something that comes in a box. We... When we did the bumper boat car pool, or bumper boats in Vernon, down on the south end of town there, oh, that was back in 2003, that was a package liner. And, you know, we brought that in with a piece of equipment. That was a... We hauled that in there with a big skid steer. Yeah. We still got the pictures of it at the shop. And that worked well, but the membrane is just... Is spot-on. Once that's installed, we gotta move on to the patio, the concrete coping and whatnot. That's all a state spec. That's not just something that's done. It has to meet the spec, so, you know, a child's hand can grab onto the edge of the pool and whatnot. The patio will all be reinforced with 3/8 rebar. Since, as long as I can remember, I've always used 4,000 PSI concrete. Everything's done the way a state would build a bridge. You know, any pool patio that you walk on, that you see, that might have a crack in it or something like that, that's gonna be a 2,500 or at best a 3,000 PSI, you know, test concrete. This is a 4,000 PSI concrete, all tied with 3/8 rebar, and I also put wire mesh inside of it, and I put a fiber mesh reinforcement. The other thing that's unique in the way that this job is bid, and is bid-right, whenever you see any type of imperfections in a patio, it's very common to think that the earth settled and caused the material to sink and split. That's not the case. 95% of the time, it's not the case. It's typically a soil that has the ability to hold some type of moisture that'll freeze in a good winter, and when it freezes, it expands. We found that out many years ago in Chicopee, Massachusetts. We were at a job site in the wintertime. I wanted to check out what was going on, and I could actually put my entire arm between the bottom of the patio and the top of the pool. The patio's supposed to be sitting on the pool. And that's when we learned just how much the ice can lift up these swimming pool patios, and that's when the cracking and whatnot occurs. This job is all bid to allow us to dig the whole area down a foot and fill it all in with a free-draining, like beach sand. And in road construction, you can't do that. You know, if you have a commercial patio in front of a building that a delivery truck could drive on, you can't do that. You have to use gravel. Gravel's great for strength, but process gravel is not good for draining. Process gravel will freeze. Brian and I have tried that before, and we wound up with imperfections in the patio. Brian and I have tried that before and we wind, wound up with imperfections in the patio. Because the pool patio is just subject to foot traffic and pool furniture, lifeguards, stuff like that, it doesn't need to hold any tremendous amount of weight. We're not driving delivery trucks on it. And with the sand underneath, not only does the sand not freeze, like at the beach in the wintertime, you walk down by the water, that sand's never frozen, it never will. It insulates the, the heavier soils down below like a frost blanket. So, those will never freeze either. So, the sand is just a, an absolute wonderful product. We always extend it beyond the patio. And, uh, I love, what I love about that is between the patio and the fence, you never get any weeds because the weeds don't grow in the, in the sand. So, it just works awesome. Um, the sewer line, phase eight, that is a process, and I, I slightly misspoke, although it's not related to the pool, but they wanted in the proposal. That's gonna be a septic company out of Ellington, Connecticut, uh, somebody I've worked with for many years, is gonna come in. We'll do the excavation and, uh, the septic company's gonna put in a new, new sanitary line out to the street. I think the town had, uh, very good reason and studies to show that that line, um, it has, if it wasn't breached, it had some issues. And it needed to be freshened up, especially with this brand-new project. So, that's phase eight. Um, you know, phase nine, Chris, is that when we get into like the-
Lifeguard chairs.
The chairs and the, the benches and all that stuff.
The benches, the awnings. Everything will either be refurbished, restored, or replaced to look like brand-new.
Yep, and every, you know, that's where we really got into a lot of details with the town and, and they, they wanted it done, you know, top-notch and, and I agree. So, you know, everything from the, the bench to the fence to everything is gonna be tip, tip-top. Um, phase ten, uh, water to fill the pools and the chemicals needed to balance it. That, that was another piece, um, you know, and it has come up before, but the town actually wanted to make sure that Giulianos Pools was gonna come in and make sure that this pool was up to snuff for swimming. Not only build it, get it watertight, get everything graded out, cleaned up patio and all, but they, they wanted the water balanced, uh, so it would pass, so it will pass a state inspection. Um, and I, was there a portion of this that they wanted us to maintain it for a certain amount of time before they felt comfortable, Brian? Was that in the-
We were gonna provide training to their-
Okay, so there's so much detail in this that we're actually gonna train the staff in this proposal till they're comfortable taking over for us. And if there's any questions, I mean, that's what we're known for. I mean, you know, we're, you know, a few miles down the street. Um, finish grading. That's something that's not typically found with a swimming pool contractor. We do that from all our residential to commercial to industrial, you know, projects. So, we're actually gonna come in and do all the grading and whatnot around the pool. And the grading's a big deal, because although we really love our drainage system and we can take a fire truck amount of water, it's nice, especially on the Fox Hill Tower side, we're gonna come in there and put a nice little subtle swale, something that's mobile and probably won't even be noticed. But as that water comes rushing down, that water's gonna run around the pool in both directions. So, we can just sheet flow as much as we can and let the natural ground soak it up. And, um, that's just good grading practices. Um, installation of the fencing, um, that's an easy one. It's just a industrial fence, uh, to state spec and town spec. Um, the security system install-
The camera eye.
Okay, okay. That was where Marty, they wanted an actual camera eye. Take it one step further.
They wanted security for the pool and that was the best option.
Okay.
Everybody.
Tell me one of the good features of that camera. Doesn't it alert people with cell phone alerts?
So, it's basically a camera that you'll have up around the pool area. And you can draw on a template, oh, sorry. It's basically a camera that you could, like, you're gonna install, I think we have like six different cameras around the pool area. And then like on a temp, on a, a tablet, you can draw in where you don't want people to go around that area. And if they do cross into that area, it sounds off, an alarm on somebody's watch. You get an alarm on your phone. And there's also a, a remote receiver that everybody will hear. Um, maybe you wanna have a phone number that it goes to, like, say, the police department or to the, uh, fire department if something happens. So, there's somebody that always is there to respond. Um, but that gives you extra security besides the fence that we're gonna be installing as well. That's something that Marty insisted on. Um, I don't know if it was him directly or if it was the town of Vernon, but that was something that, what they asked for and that's our best solution.
Thanks, Chris. The, the phase fourteen here, we talked about the safety cover. Um, I was very impressed to see that the town wanted to install a safety cover on the pool. Um, some of you might know it as an elephant cover. Um, there's a actual real picture of an elephant standing on one of these covers. We've probably all seen pictures of vehicles that have driven on them by accident and, and whatnot. But, um, every single person in this room could stand in the center of that cover and jump up and down. And, um, no issues at all, an unbelievable cover. The downfall of those covers years ago, um, twenty-five, thirty years back, is that they let a lot of sunlight through, so the pool would open up green. You could almost see right through them back then. Technology has allowed them to tighten up that weave so much that the amount of sunlight that comes through the pool is so minimal, you won't get the photosynthesis to turn over that, that pool water. So, the pools are opening extremely clean. And it's been a very popular product and I was very happy to see the town opt for that. It's gonna help immensely. Um, you know, basically, you know, in conclusion, you know, I, we, we showed some slides here, basically show who we are and, you know, very proud of our fleet, very proud of our being right here in Vernon. Um, we, I've personally learned how to swim in that pool. Um, I grew up right here. I could walk to the house I grew up in, probably take me about five, six minutes to walk there from this room right here. So, this is a very important project to me. When I go there and I, I look at it and I walk around, I can remember my, you know, my mother dropping me off and walking in there with my little suit and stuff like that in the, in the early eighties. And it was, it brings back a lot of, a lot of good memories like that. I, I can remember driving by there a million times. I remember playing American Legion baseball there, you know, Vernon Orioles, playing softball there. As I got older, I, I've, I've spent a lot of time in, in that park and it, it means a lot to me. And it, it seems that, and I believe I read that, you know, there's a project going on with the, with the tower up top and, uh, between this pool. And it, it's very exciting to me as somebody that's always been local to, to kinda see this getting revitalized. I, I think that's cool. Um, you know, again, just going over the, the bullet points, you know, we have a lot of locations, you know, around New England. Um, I personally work out of this location right here in Vernon, Connecticut. And, um, we have a hundred and eighty trucks on the road, which we're extremely proud of. Um, we're nationally ranked. It, it says ranked in the Pool and Spa News, which is a Los Angeles-based, you know, magazine, which has been around, you know, since the beginning of time in, in the swimming pool world. And, um, we've ranked consistently in the top fifty for a very long time. In reality, we're the top three largest privately-owned pool companies in the United States. It's something else that we're extremely proud of. Um, got over tens of thousands of satisfied customers and I've got fifty-three hundred pools that I've put in the ground and, um, and they're all still there. So. Very important. Does anybody have any questions or anything like that?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you. So, will, um, Mr. Picaro have any, uh, summarization comments first before we get to questions?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think Mr. Giuliano did a wonderful job giving all the details. The only thing I'd like to highlight is throughout the entire process, and Bryant had touched on it, but I wanna emphasize it to the council for consideration in your motion. Um, we had been working with the state and local health department. Uh, they are required to sign off on this. They are the state regulatory authority. They were part of the initial conversations in the design award and negotiation of this contract and, uh, have been working side-by-side with our team, uh, throughout this process as well.
Thank you. So, now we'll open up to questions, Ms. Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Good evening. I'm really excited about this project, being a, a youth swimmer back in my day too. And my children all were on swim teams, so we're kinda like a water family. Um, a couple of questions about some of the amenities. Um, I know that we have had a, a swim team. Is there gonna be like starting blocks?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, we're gonna have starting blocks like you currently have. We're also gonna have lane lines along the bottom of the pool so people can swim just like a regular, um, swim meet.
Will there be the, those ones that float and they kinda twirl, the lane lines, um, that'll be hooked into the pool?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we have that in the proposal.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, being on a-
There's eight lanes, I believe. I have it written down on my proposal. I think there's a total of eight swim lanes.
That's really good. That's great for our swim team.
Yep.
Um, the other thing is the, um, the deck surface. Is it gonna be a smooth surface or is it gonna be a little bit, you know, grainy for slippage?
That, that's a wonderful question. And, um, the deck surface has a texture to it. It's called a mag finish. Um, a mag finish looks awesome. It, I guess the best way I could equate a mag finish would be years and years ago, the, the swirl ceilings. And, um, but we do it to concrete in a very subtle way. It, it looks amazing and it is such a nicer look than the old-school broom finish. And we're the only people that are, that I've ever seen that do that mag finish. I've been doing that mag finish since ninety-five or six. And, um, it works awesome and it has the perfect texture. The, some of the decorative concretes do have a lot of issues, like the stamped concretes with the sealer, um, very, very slippery. But this is gonna be a nice, regular concrete with a nice mag finish. It cannot slip, but yet is a fine balance between not hurting our feet either. But you'll love it, non-skid finish, it's awesome.
Can't wait to try it out. Um, another question about the, um, filtering system. Uh, is it going to be, uh, easy to maintain, um, and balance the chemicals and stuff?
Yeah, we, I personally pushed hard to dumb that system down. Um, Brian and I see all the time, people try to go for the very big elaborate, you know, systems that are all automated and whatnot. And, and Brian and I, Cormier, our vice president, have had the, the luxury to be able to try all this stuff at our own homes. And, um, we've had a lot of issues with it. And the way that the system is set up is extremely simple and it's extremely easy for anybody to, to take care of it. It does have some automated stuff, but it's automated in a mechanical sense, where just the water moving through it is moving chemicals to balance that water. Yes, there is and there always will be a, a human element, uh, to check stuff and whatnot. But the, the ease of use is extremely good, especially in the sense of like the filtration systems and the fact that the advancement in those and, and the size of the filtration systems that we're using. So, things aren't jamming up. Usually, any pool issues are related to kinda poor circulation and, and obviously, lack of chlorine. But all that stuff is a hundred percent taken care of. And like I had said, they're not gonna let us go, the town, until they're comfortable. And that's part of our agreement. And that was something that Marty made sure was in there, so we're, we're happy to do that.
Well, I look forward to my grandson taking swim lessons in that pool. So, the next generation of swimmers is coming up. But thank you very much for all your hard work and due diligence with this project. And, uh, we thank you very much.
No problem, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Uh, I heard they seen, Ms. Gesay?
Thank you, through the deputy mayor, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Giuliano, for a very thorough, comprehensive presentation. Um, I think you're, it sounds like your work is equally thorough and comprehensive, so thank you for that. What is the starting date for this, this job?
We're able to start the pool anytime. Um, I think I might defer to Mike on that, as I, I can start the job whenever we get the green light. It's gonna take approximately eight to twelve weeks in engineering. That, so as far as I go, my company goes, that's the only thing that holds us back because the state won't, will not allow us to start until the engineering is set. So, that will take approximately eight to twelve weeks.
Okay, can you give us, um, next quarter or can you give us some idea of when?
Yeah, I'm gonna-
We'll begin?
If the green light, yeah, whatever that is, it's, it's gonna be eight to twelve weeks until we have the engineering. So.
Time to listen.
Two to three months.
So, just to clarify, if you start July first, it'll be, and it says thirteen months on your display, you'll be done, start July first, twenty twenty-three, you'll be done August twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
That's the expected timeframe?
Yeah. It, um, the demo portion of it though, isn't something that's not regulated by the state. So, as long as the, the municipal level is comfortable with us doing the demo, that's a big piece of it. So, I can be doing the demo while the engineering's in place, if the town is comfortable. If I can get in there and do the demo before the engineering, then we're gonna have a, a twenty twenty-four swimming season right from the start.
Thank you. Lynd, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but-
Okay, thank you. So, so my next question is, it feels to me like thirteen months is a long time. Why does it take thirteen months?
It doesn't, but the, the town was, I think from past experiences, they just wanted to make sure that they weren't setting any unrealistic expectations. Um, we have no problem doing the job quicker, but the, the town was very concerned and they wanted to make sure that they had prepared for anything and anything that could possibly go wrong on the project. And made sure that they gave us some flex time in there. Um, you know, it's, I wasn't gonna say it, but it's, it's obviously, it's my goal to finish way ahead of schedule and impress everybody and, and make sure we have a, a twenty twenty-four swimming season.
Well, you weren't gonna say it, but my next question was going to be, what's your, what might you propose as an earlier finish date? And I, I'm not holding you to it, just, just like to understand that.
Yeah, I, in, in my mind, the, the worst-case scenario would be that we would be pouring a patio in April of twenty-four and putting a fence around the pool and having the whole thing completely done and wrapped up for Memorial Day of twenty twenty-four.
But, but let's not get, uh, that into our minds, because we all know how the state works, all right? They're not, um, you know, as much as I love the state of Connecticut, the officials there, they're not the fastest working. You know, we have all kinds of problems getting building inspectors now because they didn't have the class. So, let's not put that on, uh, Giulianos Pools. I'm, I'm sure they will work as fast as and, and efficient as they can, but they have to get there where they can do their stuff first for the state.
I qualified my question, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I hope everybody heard that I won't hold them to it.
I know, I just don't want people in the audience to say, oh, we're gonna have a swim next year, you know? Yep, when the state inspections, how long does it get? Mr. Picaro can tell us, when we have a broken fire truck, how long does it take to get that sucker inspected after repair? Months, yes, months to get a guy. You know, we're really far from Hartford here, you know? So, just don't wanna leave that impression, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Giuliano, um, my next question, have you, you've done many, many, many projects and similar projects. I heard that in the presentation. Have you done, done anything just like what you're facing here with this project?
No.
Given the terrain, given the, the terrain?
No project is, you know, everyone is unique, you know? That's part of the reason it makes the job fun and always challenging. But countless things that are just like it, between the hydrostatic, the giant mountain, you know, it's not, I'd call it a hill. You know, we're used to projects up in northern New England, in Vermont, in New Hampshire, at ski resorts and stuff like that, where there's literally thirty-seven-hundred-foot mountains emptying down on us and whatnot, all in ledge and stuff out in Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, kinda hanging off the side of cliffs and stuff like that. So, we're very used to that type of stuff. Um, this, this particular one poses a, a challenge, just with the, the enormity of the pool and the amount of, of concrete. But within that concrete, we're gonna find actual half-inch rebar. And, um, I have, you know, equipment and tools to, to dice that up and, and cut all that up. And I do have a, even though it poses a challenge, we've done it many times. And, um, it's, in a normal thing, you would need a separate construction company to do something like that. But we have all that stuff in-house and, and have done it many times before. And, um, again, I, many, many pools, especially in the, in the fifties and the sixties, they, they were actually overbuilt, you know, in terms of their strength. They didn't do good with the cold weather and, and holding up with all the chipping and all that stuff. But they're a very, you know, rugged, heavy pool. And I have a lot of experience taking those, taking those out and obviously putting ones back in.
And I did pick that up in your, uh, description earlier. Thank you, thank you for expanding on that. Um, Mr. Deputy Mayor, another question is, I'm assuming there is a warranty for this project?
Yes, all the work is, all of our workmanship has always been guaranteed for life. The structure that we're putting in, um, and it doesn't really apply to a town, but it has a lifetime warranty for as long as, you know, if, if we're, as long as the current owner owns it and it's transferable one time. That's a big deal, that the actual structure has a dual lifetime warranty. The structure is manufactured in Latham, New York, just north of Albany. And, uh, it's been done so since nineteen fifty-nine. It's fascinating that the, the creator of it and the original owner- It's fascinating that the, the creator of it and the original owner is, is still involved in the company, still alive and well. And, um, so that's the warranty on the structure. But with any structure and any product, you have the contractor. And all of our work is, all of our workmanship is warranted for, for life. So if all of a sudden we look and there's a divot in the bottom of the pool, we cover that. We do that for commercial, industrial and residential. Because if there's a divot that appears in the bottom of the pool, it, there's a reason it's there, it shouldn't be there. And, um, all that stuff is taken care of by us.
And my final question, Mr. Deputy Mayor, would there be any interference with the ball fields? In any way, given the construction that needs to occur?
I, I didn't see that. I asked that question, that came up. Um, we, we spoke about that and I, I was very sensitive to me. And, um, we have a plan of working together where there won't be any disruption. I'm going to be coming in right off the parking lot, so I'm not going to be working through the ball fields. The only part is that, I believe it might have been phase eight there, the, the sanitary line. You know, that's where we have to change directions and go another route. But I don't, I think we're going kind of near that basketball court and out that way. We're not going through the ball fields or anything like that.
Thank you, Mr. Giuliana. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome. Ms. Latender?
Yes, thank you, thank you. My first question, just to verify, I, I believe the pool house is separate and it's still under consideration. That's correct, not included here. Let's see. I think some of my other questions have been, oh, answered. Oh, except this device. Can, can you explain to me again what this is and how it works? I totally missed that.
The, the structure right there?
Yes, yeah.
Yep, that's just a, like a miniature version of the actual panel. And the panel comes in sections that are eight feet long and they're forty-two inches high. And it's G two thirty-five galvanized steel. Now, to, to put that into normal terms, it would be the type of product that's used at a post to support a stop sign, a guardrail that we see on the side of eighty-four, um, a fence in a Little League baseball field, it's a metal fence. But the reason why the fence lasts a, a lifetime is because it's a G two thirty-five galvanized fence. G two thirty-five galvanized steel means it's not just a coating. It's something that's baked on in a kiln so hot that the protection goes all the way through the pores of the steel. Any type of product is, you know, even this countertop right here, in one-way, shape or form is porous. So the galvanization goes all the way through that product. And now, the, the membrane goes on the front side of it, facing the audience there. And you're looking at the backside, like the structure, where there's a concrete footer that locks it all together.
Oh, so this goes in the ground first and, and the liner goes on top of this?
Yep.
Which is that other side?
The liner, the liner goes on the other side and it clips into a track which sits on top. That's that coping that the state wants to, so it kind of fits a child's hand for them to grab the edge of the pool. So, and that sits right on top.
All right, so this, this liner doesn't go against sand of any type?
Nope, it, there's actually, there's actually a foam padding that, which is one step we've always done. So you have like this, like, nice, not soft, but like a ever-so-little cushion on the sidewall for like swimmers to push off of and whatnot. And then on the bottom, it goes on that vermiculite product. I was talking about that porous concrete.
So, so the inside you see is square? Then it doesn't have that sloped side that you see in the, um, in the residential?
It, it still does have the slope. So that panel that you see there would go into the ground three and a half feet. And that's what we would call the shallow end. And then everything would, would slope off to a state code. There's, there's certain like fourteen degree to one slopes that have to be met to go down into the deeper part of the pool.
Having a little trouble visualizing. Okay, that's all right, that's all right.
We may have a picture in here that could show some of the dimension. Yeah?
Yeah.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, just for clarification, I, I think what Councilwoman Latandra was asking about is the walls themselves. Are, are they ninety-degree vertical walls that, that square off to the bottom? Or like in a residential pool, are the sides sloped? You know, I think that's what you're asking, right, Councilwoman Latandra? So are they sloped at the bottom as you would see like in a, in a pool, like a, you know, in your backyard?
They are sloped, but they're a little sharper in a commercial and industrial application than they are in a residential pool. They have a little bit of a steeper slope. But it's basically earth with three inches of the vermiculite product on that and the membrane sits right on that.
On top of this, or is that just on the bottom?
Yeah, if you want, I can kind of stand up and show you a little bit more. I'm happy to.
Okay.
So, yeah, go ahead, please.
Thank you.
So, is the stand-up mic on?
So, it's like the structure right here. I'd, I'd rather just kind of talk loud, but this is going to go and, this is going to sit at exactly this height, right about here, forty-two inches. This would go all the way down to the floor. This would be our sidewall, what we push off of when we're swimming in the pool. You're talking about into the deep end. Does this go all the way down to the bottom? No, it just goes a little over waist level, down to the floor. And then it has a slope that goes down into the deep end that's created with the vermiculite product.
I see, okay.
And this is the, the patio sits on top of this.
I see, but so that really is holding in the, the embankment or the side?
Exactly, yes.
I got it, okay. Um, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Giuliana. Good presentation, informative.
No problem. And anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of questions about the engineering. In phase one, the engineering that's mentioned there, does your firm do that engineering or do you subcontract that?
The engineering gets subcontracted out, uh, to a firm that might be familiar to a lot of you. Russell and Dawson is the name of the firm that does all the engineering.
So I presume a certain amount of engineering has gone into your product before this, uh, bid was submitted. Is there any likelihood that what's found in the phase one engineering will change the cost of the final product?
That's a great question, but it, that's not a possibility. The, the pool's already been engineered and that is fine for any type of residential. But all the commercial and industrial does have to go through a second phase of engineering. But we know what that is. We know the state code inside and out. And that's why I brought our vice president too, just in case there was any very technical stuff. Brian knows the code as good or better than the state themselves. So we have priced it for that. And the code hasn't changed. We're, we're familiar with them. Brian and I, you know, we hold our, our specialty pool builder's license, which is something that's required in the state of Connecticut. We also hold, uh, what's called an SP one license, a specialty plumber's license, where we have to go through annual training and courses and take tests and whatnot to, to keep up on all the latest codes. So everything is, is priced, you know, right for that. And there has been some code changes and one in relation to the bonding of the pool to, to keep it safe from any electrical charge or anything like that. There's a lot of complexities to it, but all that stuff is, is in there and it's in the bid and it's, it, it's not possible for that to change, although it's an awesome question.
So from a risk point of view, we don't see a problem with engineering changing the final cost of the project?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Wendus?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening. Um, excellent presentation first, first and foremost. And thank you for bringing us to the town of Vernon, saving the taxpayers millions of dollars. Um, and, you know, giving our pool back that we all enjoyed as a kid. I remember cold Saturday morning swimming lessons there back in the seventies. And let me, let me apologize in advance. If I umpired some of your softball games at Henry Park, I'm sorry. I did that for years out there. Anyway, um, just so I understand this better, is this going to be a s- a sand filter system, a sand or filter system?
Sand, sand filter system.
And will it have to be, uh, backwashed on a daily, um, weekly basis?
Weekly basis, yes.
Okay, and, um, will this be like a, like a timer system where they can preset it to come on every day for on and off in a certain amount of hours? So really nobody has to man it, it just does it?
That's correct. And nowadays, all the timers are actually built right into the good pumps that we use. So we don't even have to have those external timers. It's all built right into the pump.
Good. And, um, any chance, is it, is this already built into the thirteen months? Or will, could the winter and severity of the winter affect and push back the timeline or is that already considered?
No, that's already considered, already built in.
Oh, well, awesome. And I thank you again.
No problem.
Let's not get over and bunk, ram, bunk just about the timeline. Just, just, well, no, everyone's like, we don't want to hold them, you know, on July, on, uh, June twenty-seventh, we don't want to all be picketing Giuliano pools, you know? Where's our pool? You know, let's just be calm about it, please, yes. Although we'd like to jump in that little demo pool, but never. Ms., Ms. Lebec?
Hi, um, on the demolition, you're doing the demolition?
Yes.
And removing all of the product that you take out?
That's correct.
And that's in the cost?
Yep.
Okay. Um, another question is the sewer company you're using, you said out of Ellington. If I could have the name, please?
Yes, Skip's Wastewater Services.
Okay. And, um, on the, um, installation of the fence, the height? Is there somewhere I missed or does it say how high it is?
Six-foot stainless steel black chain link fence.
Six-foot?
Six-foot fence.
And, um, is there any other town or municipality in the state of Connecticut that has a vinyl liner?
A hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, can you name one? I mean, just for.
The first one that comes to my mind is in Danbury, Connecticut.
Danbury?
You know, I, I, um, I could get you a list, no problem.
Sure.
You could always email me.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
One thing I want to note is that all those ones that are there used to be concrete pools just like this. You're not groundbreaking and making this decision, although it was new when I presented it to the town. This is something that I've been doing forever, yanking them out and putting in the membrane.
Yeah, I, I, we're in New England, so I've got a lot of frosties. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. O'Connell?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I echo what everybody said. Your presentation was, it was very impressive and I, I thank you. And you may have covered this, so I apologize if I'm being redundant here. But the, the perimeter of the pool, the size of the pool, the footprint, I'll call it, is the same as what is currently there, correct?
I believe.
Or ballpark?
Correct.
I know it's at least the same. Did we? Okay, same footprint.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Ms. Latender?
Yes, just, um, question for you or Mr. Picaro. Are we paying for this in two fiscal, over two fiscal years? Sixty?
So, that is such an easy question, Ms. Latender. I'll let Michael answer it.
Uh, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The council at the last meeting approved funding, RFP funding to support this project.
The whole thing?
Correct.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Ms. Neves?
All right, I'll just leave it there. Thank you through you. Um, really appreciate your presentation and do love the fact that we hold this pool so near and dear to all of our hearts here. Uh, just wanted to kind of circle back to the numbers and the logistics. So I see that your, um, bid is substantially lower than what we were quoted back in two thousand nineteen. And I was just curious if you could explain, you know, why, how you were able to come up with such a competitive bid compared to what we had received, you know, in two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, so I think you're comparing apples and oranges though, right, Mr. Picaro? Because he, he, Mr. Giuliano, I don't think was a bidder at the time, was he? On that one, the first RFP?
Through, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Um, so the architectural and engineering quotes that we received were for an indoor pool and a gunite concrete pool. The product that Mr. Giuliano has presented is a more cost-effective quality solution with the liner. That accounts for, I think, a massive, uh, delta that we're seeing in the, in the price quotes that are coming in.
So would you say that the substantial cost to the prior, um, offering was solely concrete?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Again, the architectural and engineering that we received was for an indoor pool and it was for gunite, uh, as well. So I, I think that was, that was a big part of it, yes.
Uh, the, the seasonal six million was an indoor pool?
No, that was an outdoor pool, but that also included the pool house and it included, uh, gunite to replace what was there.
Okay, great.
So, so just to clarify, I think when you put that RFP out, when you put the second RFP out, which is this situation here, we put it out, what, didn't have to be gunite, you just put it out whatever it is? Okay.
Yep, through you, Mr. Deputy. We casted a bigger net and, uh, Mr. Giuliano came in with his cost-effective solution.
So I think if we asked Mr. Giuliano, if you did that, this pool that you've told us about tonight with gunite, what would the cost be? Just a round number.
If we were to build that pool out of gunite, I would, I would venture to think that our number would be triple or quadruple. But there's no good reason for it. The only reason is.
No, but I, I, it's okay, but I just think we're making the comparison because if you compare the two RFPs, it's comparing apples and oranges, yeah. So, go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate everyone's, uh, contributions and, um, definitely love the, um, you know, staying within the exact same parameters. In terms of amenities, I just want to make sure that all of the features that were originally there, including the diveboards, the, um, lifeguard stations, all of those things, that that's going to be included.
Yeah, so in regards to the amenities, I'll give you a quick overview. So we're going to have eight lane lines with Ts marked on the walls along the bottom of the pool. We're going to have eight six-inch competitor gold medal racing lines with hooks to mount in the pool. We're going to have eight, uh, rock-solid starting platforms with anchors. So they can, uh, they can, you guys could have a, a swim meet if you want to inside the pool. We're going to have a handicap lift, so if anybody's handicapped, they'll be able to get access into the pool. We have four lifeguard chairs that are being replaced. The benches are all being, uh, sandblasted, painted and refinished. And the shade structures, the awnings are also being sandblasted, painted, refinished with all brand-new awnings on top of them. So everything will look completely brand-new like it was however many years ago when you guys had a pool and it was first brand-new. Other amenities, see if I missed anything. I think that's pretty much it. We have the lifeguard chairs being replaced, the benches being all to look like brand-new, brand-new awnings, uh, struc- the awnings with the same existing structures, but everything is going to be refinished, sandblasted and painted. And then we have the eight lane lines, the eight, um, platforms and the, uh, lane lines along the bottom of the pool as well for the swimmers.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then, uh, you did answer one of my other questions in terms of accessibility, which we greatly appreciate in the community. When we refer to both pools, are you referring to just the deep end of the pool or is there a second pool?
We have the small rectangular kiddie pool, the twelve-by-twenty-six kiddie pool. And then we also have the, um, large L-shaped pool. There's going to be one handicap lift that we priced into the project. And I believe it's, it is portable, so if you needed to move it from one location to the other, you could do that.
Wonderful. And then, um, so you did say that there is going to be a kiddie pool, correct? And that's going to have the same exact sort of specs, the membrane, the, what is it?
Correct. It's going to have the same exact specs as what's currently there, which is basically a twelve-by-twenty-six rectangle. And the equipment will be a little bit different. We'll have a little bit smaller filter because it's not such a large body of water. It's not two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons. And it would have a little bit different pump, but it would have a built-in timer and it would be variable speed, so you can adjust the speeds.
Sure, so same liner, same?
Same exact membrane as the commercial pool, the large L as well as in the kiddie pool, correct? And then on the stairs, you'll have that abrasive, uh, that you see there on that sample. It's like a, uh, like a texture. That, that's what will be on the stairs of the pool.
And how many, um, enter exits on the pool? Is there going to be like metal ladders?
There's going to be three stainless steel ladders to get out of the pool. And then we're going to have one eight-foot step to get into the pool as well.
And then, did we answer the diveboards or is that, was that not?
There's no diving board, there's gonna be a platform for diving for a swim meet, but no diving board.
Okay, no diving board.
I don't think there's currently a diving board.
And how deep is the deep end going to be?
Eight feet deep, to diving pool.
I thought it was usually twelve, okay. Alright, well, thank you so much, I appreciate that, I will reach out if I have any additional questions.
Anybody else, questions? No one else? Okay, so I, I have a few. Do we have a handicap lift now, when, when the pool is operational, did we?
We do, it's empty.
Other than, other than me and you?
The driver's on range.
Okay, thank you. Since we're changing the type of points, is there training that we have to give the staff?
Yep, we're gonna be training the staff until they're comfortable taking over the maintenance.
Okay, you mentioned that, if the, if this gets damaged, like it's a slit in it or something, we call you?
You would call me, and we would be able to repair it. You could take a carpenter's hammer and throw it at that membrane as hard as you could, and it wouldn't hurt it, but if you found a way to do it, we can cut it out and reweld it.
Okay, well, you never know what happens, just...
No, a hundred percent.
The cover that you put over, you mentioned the elephant cover, is that one piece or multiple pieces?
That's a good question, it's one piece.
One piece, so how, so what happens is, in the fall, we call you and say, hey, guys, time to put the cover on, you put the cover on, in the spring, you take it off and you store it, or is that us?
The town staff can do it, if, if they wanna hire us to do the winterization of the pool, we're happy to do it. It's a six-to-eight-hour job to do the full winterization, including putting the cover on, a four-man project.
Okay, and when you, this cover's gotta be big, I would imagine?
Yep, the cover is approximately twenty-four inches bigger than the perimeter of the pool all the way around, so it's a, it's a big unit.
And it's gotta weigh something?
I don't have an exact weight, but it's not a solid cover, it's, it's a mesh cover. This would be something that, you know, this would be a hand cart or a little wagon for tire thing that would transport it, but, you know, for able-bodied people could pick it up and put it onto a cart.
Okay, I was wondering, and I thought it would be like tons of weight and...
No, maybe Brian have a good idea on the weight?
Probably somewhere between eight, nine hundred.
Oh, okay, somehow, good. We have, we have a place to store that, do we? Okay, good, and who puts it in? I felt the system, alright, and that, oh, and the other thing was just, we mentioned, we touched upon other activities at the park, so we'll have July in the Sky activities, so, you know, we'll have to coordinate. You know how we talked about the Miracle Field, putting it in and coordinating with activities, I think we'll have to do that with you, but I'm sure you can set up, deal with Marty for whatever activities, like when we have the mayor's concerts in there, you know, the band's gonna be hard to compete with jackhammering and stuff like that, so...
I agree, I was, that was my main question throughout the project, and we spoke a lot of that, so spoke about all that stuff, so we've got that covered.
Okay, good, cause it is a highly-used park, and, thank you, we really appreciate this, and looking forward to it, and I can't wait for the first day, and anybody who's not here at the council meeting tonight will be thrown in the pool, right, on the opening day, and so, oh, we got one mayor and Ms. Rogers, so, don't tell them, don't tell them. So, alright, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Oh, wait, Ms. Neves?
Thank you, sorry, through you, just a couple additional questions in terms of maintenance and potential, you know, community changes. So, in terms of the longevity of this liner, just like, what is the typical lifespan? Did you say twenty years?
It's fifteen to twenty-five years, and again, you could plan on fifteen, but fifteen to twenty-five years is what we've always said.
And then, how much does, like, just a standalone liner like this, how much would that cost in fifteen to twenty-five years?
We, we have a line item when we, in the quote for that membrane, do you have that, That membrane is a hundred-and-forty-thousand today's dollars, so, you know, with your normal inflation, you know, three percent per year maybe, plus or minus?
Thank you so much, and then, in terms of changes, let's just say, for whatever reason, our community desired to have a springboard added, we would need to add, you know, some additional feet to that deep end, just to make it compliant, is that something we would be able to do with the structure? Is that, you know, just kind of off limits, once it's in, it's in?
I'm gonna actually ask our vice president comment on that.
You know what, that's, hold on, that may be a moot point here. And I'll just jump in on it, it actually comes back to our risk management insurance item, so we're, we're looking at it, and we'll have updates for you, once our insurance company gets back to us on what's allowed and not allowed under our current general liability policies.
Gotcha, so it could be more, it could be less, or it's, could be less, just could be less?
There's, there's, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, so they're already built in the diving platform, but anything further, if that's what you're asking, as far as an actual diving board and, or anything in that realm, again, has to go through our insurance, we have to make sure we have coverage for it, and that's, that's a driving factor at this point in time, so we'll get back to you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there, there is a springboard there presently?
No.
No?
Yeah.
It was removed?
It was removed, or it was removed years before.
Okay, so in my childhood, there was a spring, I was like, I know I remember a springboard there. Okay, alright, that clarifies the confusion, and it, risk manager, okay, is why we don't have it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else, questions? Alright, well, thank you very much, we look forward to a very successful project.
It will be.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Bush has the motion.
Alright, the town council hereby moves to award the Horowitz Pool renovation contract to Juliano's Pools.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Bush, seconded by Ms. Gesay. Any further discussion on the motion, or discussion on the motion, I guess? Any discussion, anybody? Nobody? Alright, all in favor? Aye, raise your hand, aye. Any opposed? I don't see any opposed, any abstentions? One abstention, so we have ten, ten-four, zero opposed, one abstention, Ms. Leveque. Alright, thank you very much, thank you very much for your, it was a pleasure seeing you and, meeting you and having the demonstration there. Alright, we did that, we did that, we do the minutes, Ms. Bush, first?